Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, September 12th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the August 22nd public hearing minutes. Some of... Second?
Second.
Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any tonight. Presentations and public input. If any member of the public wishes to address the Urbana Council, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to council input and communications. Any announcements, comments from the council? Grace?
Thank you. Just had a few things I want to just reiterate to keep alive. I mentioned these last week, but I'll say them again since we have a few more people here. We've already talked about doing an overview of housing status and some needs and homeless services before ARPA, so I'm looking forward to that. In the township meeting today, we talked about a discussion on that in October. And if maybe some city staff want to also help in that coordination, that'd be awesome. Also, just wanted to bring up again, I'm still in support of a discussion about hybrid meetings. I thought that was a discussion we were going to have. And I'm also still interested in the resolution for stipulations on spending for police budget. We had started kind of that discussion, and I'm interested in that continuing and making a draft of that. And also would still love to see a contract with By Black Chambana, possibly with consulting hours, with application assistance, all sorts of things that they could help with in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments? Just have a couple of quick announcements. One is that Wednesday is Bike to Work Day from 7:30 to 10:00 a.m. If your bike is out of commission, including mine, which has a flat tire, you can still participate. Get a tee-shirt, stop by the City of Urbana tent, which will be at the Bucie Bank parking lot on Main Street at Race. There will be breakfast items and shirts and information. So that's Wednesday Bike to Work from 7:30 to 10:00 a.m. Thursday is part of the Welcoming Week activities, and there's about 39 different events and activities for Welcoming Week this year, but one of them will be right here in Urbana City Council chambers from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. It'll be coffee with the mayor and other city staff, and we will have people from the city here as well and the community. Coffee, we'll have refreshments and a few extra Welcoming Week tee-shirts. All these events are coordinated and sponsored with many community sponsors, but coordinated by the New American Welcome Center, and this celebrates immigration in our community. So that Welcoming Week event here in council chambers is Thursday morning, 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. And I'm happy to report that as of three days ago, the recruitment brochure and position announcements were listed on Poly Hire for both the Chief of Police position and the Community Development Services position. So those applications are open. There's no unfinished business. Reports of standing committees. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda. Sharice Hersi chaired that.
Okay, I'm presenting on the consent agenda to the Urbana City Council for approval, Resolution Number 2022-09-065R, Resolution of Support for an Application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Baker's Lane Multi-Use Path. Is there a second?
You want to read both of them?
Oh, oh, that's right, they're both. And a Resolution Number 202209-09-066R, Resolution of Support for an Application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds, Florida Avenue Multi-Use Path, Lincoln to Race. Now, is there a second?
That was moved by Sharice?
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On the regular agenda, there is a resolution. Resolution Number 2022-09-067R, Resolution of Support for an Application for Safe Streets for All Grant Program Funds, Champaign County Education Encouragement and Enforcement Campaign and Lincoln Avenue Project, Washard to Killarney, and...
And that's a motion for approval?
Motion for... Motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. And I believe John had some follow-up information from last week. Questions?
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, and just wanted to answer some of the questions that were asked at last week's committee of the whole meeting. So I know I shared this with you by email, but I'll go ahead and read them off for the meeting. The question was, is there a cost associated with these grant applications? RPC's services for the grant applications do not cost the city and are a benefit of the city's membership in the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Transportation Study, or COATS. Public Works hired Hanson Professional Services to prepare the details for the Lincoln Avenue Washard to Killarney project as part of the SS4A grant application. Their view is approximately $25,000. The second question was, why is Washard Drive the southern terminus of the Lincoln Avenue project? And yeah, apologize, I should have known this before the meeting, but reviewing the background information, the limits of Washard Drive to the south and Killarney Street to the north were selected by a combination of safety data and existing pavement condition. And 2021, COATS developed the Champaign-Urbana Urban Area Safety Plan to identify priority road segments and intersections based on analysis of crash data. This study identified North Lincoln Avenue as the region's highest priority road segment, starting at the intersection with Eve Street and extending north across the interstate to Oaks Road. The city selected the limits of Washard Drive, which is one block south of Eve Street, and Killarney Street based on the location of poor pavement condition. South and north of these limits respectively, the existing pavement condition is substantially better and is not a candidate for improvement at this time. Third question was, what is the fire department's opinion of the proposed three-lane section on Lincoln? And so Public Works has discussed this project with the fire department, and the proposed three-lane section can present more constraints on the fire department and other emergency vehicles during their response when compared with the four-lane section. But during the design phase of this project, we will continue to coordinate with the fire department and other first responders to address concerns about potential constraints from a three-lane section while improving transportation safety on this corridor. Design features that are currently proposed, like the cutouts for MTD buses and better preemption devices on traffic signals, can improve operation of emergency vehicles in this corridor, and additional design features will be considered during the planning phase. So, thanks. Are there any other questions?
Sharice?
Yes. I drive down that area on Lincoln Avenue a lot, so my question, main question is this because the one thing I've noticed is that the easement, the curb of where the street, where the lights are, there are also trees and so on and so forth. How do you propose to get a cutout for MTD?
Those locations will probably require some right-of-way acquisition, and what we're looking at is the southbound... The southbound bus stops, which there we'd be working with primarily the, like, the apartment complex properties.
Okay, so where north, one north and one south are?
Yes. I know there's three.
Capstone?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, which wouldn't be bad considering there's a large student population. The other thing I wanted to know was, is there, or have you thought of how during certain hours of the day, and particularly morning drive, evening drive, how a three-lane highway may impede commuters coming in from 74, from different townships and so on and so forth, that work at Carl, that work at U of I, that may work in with the school district, that kind of thing, how that traffic might end up being heavier than what it is now with four lanes?
Sure. The, at least based on the average daily traffic, which I believe is around 14,000 to 16,000 in this part of Lincoln Avenue, those are, that is generally below the upper limit of what would be allowed for a road diet like this. So like in the IDOT policies, as an example, Champaign is working with IDOT to actually make Prospect Avenue a road diet, go down to three lanes from Interstate 74 South to Bradley, which Prospect has substantially higher traffic than we do on Lincoln. And so just... It will be different kind of traffic than what we're seeing today by only having the one lane in each direction, but it is not to be... It's not expected to be a problem.
It's not expected to be a problem.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's it.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Grace?
Thanks for the explanation there. Did you say road diet in Sharice's question answer?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. That is, that's the kind of parlance for going from a wider road to a narrower road.
And is that for some kind of traffic calming or control device? Or I mean, what's, is that an intentional thing we're trying to do here?
Yeah, that is, that is the, going from a four-lane cross-section to a three-lane section. Travel lane, one travel lane in each direction with a center turn lane. Yeah, and that provides a lot of the benefits of the safety improvements that we're trying to get for. And it is supported by the crash data with rear-end crashes being the most prevalent within recent records, that instead of having, you know, somebody in the passing lane making a left-hand turning movement, for example, you get them into a turning lane, then you're not creating those conflict points.
Okay. And then my other question was about, I appreciate your answers there, about the $25,000 for this other company to work on the project details. And so is that something that's already been contracted, and then that's for the application itself, right? Not like if we were awarded? Is that right?
That's correct. That was, that was approved as a budget amendment, I believe in August. Yes, and so that work is, for the most part, been completed.
And so then, in the financial impact in the memo, we say that the city's cost would be $50,000. Does that include that $25,000 or that would be on top of it? Because the campaign would be 1.25 million. If awarded, the city's share would be $50,000. But it's kind of, we already paid the $25,000, we're not getting back either way, right? And then would it be an additional 50,000 or an additional $25,000 after that?
You're right, yeah. The $25,000 for the, kind of the early engineering for the application is not included in this memo's discussion, yeah.
Okay, so if awarded, then it would be an additional $50,000 for the project, and then we had 25 in the front end for the application, right?
Right, yeah, there'd be the, the city's, the city's contribution for this grant, if we're to get both the county-wide education program and the road project would be $50,000 plus $2 million. The road project would be a $2 million local match from the city.
And are they connected? Is there a stipulation that we get both or neither? Are any of these tied together, sounded like?
My understanding is that we may get pieces, and we get, may get all, we may get none, we may get parts of the application. So like the, the region's application has like five or six parts to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. It's been moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, our last resolution...
Our last resolution for approval. I think, I think that all questions have been answered about this. Was it approval or no recommendation? But I think we're going to move it for approval.
Yes, you move for approval.
Resolution Number 2022-09-068R, Resolution Adopting the City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act, ARP-A Concept Plan.
And as I understand it, last week, there were some concerns and requests that the application window be extended to 60 days, so that's what you have in the memo in front of you, and as well that the review process be set up so that, that there's separation between folks supplying technical assistance and those reviewing, and that's been in the works as well. We had additional questions or comments come in since then related to geographic restrictions on, or qualifications on the metrics and rubric, and also making sure people are in financial good standing. And you do have some sample language for the good standing, and then some options to discuss for, to address the concerns about geography. And I believe Ashley and JD will be, or Will, will be presenting those.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor's saying, the, there's a supplemental memo from last week, just kind of going over the 60 days. That was incorporated, and you can see the updated timeline. It gets stretched out a little further than 30 additional days. It kind of falls into holidays, so you get some holidays, and you get less business days. And then there's, you know, some of the feedback from yesterday, or last week, was incorporating, you know, a little bit of, you know, a different review process. So some of that is a little bit too much detail for the concept plan, especially kind of given that depending on how many applications we have, or how much staff availability there is, it might change a little bit on the fly. So not all of that is incorporated in the concept, comprehensive plan, but I mean, we heard kind of the suggestion, and we're committed to that, and we can provide some work updates along the way. I think the intention now is that RPC will provide all the technical assistance through the application period, and then city staff will review the applications, for any applications that the city would submit. The RPC would then score those, and that would kind of be the, the overall gist. There's some more details to work out, but I think that's kind of the divisions of duties as it is now. And then I just took, we took the liberty of drafting some sample language in case there are some proposed amendments. The first one, I'll do the easy one, is the good standing with the state, just trying to incorporate that into some language. And then for the geography, currently, there's a couple of questions about, you know, what are the limits to ARPA funds? Kind of as a whole, the federal treasury kind of assumes that whatever the city's spending the funds on is for the benefit of the city. There is, if you kind of read into FAQs, there's a little bit of rules about, you know, spending outside or transfers outside should be proportionate to the impacts of the city. And right now, in our, in the concept plan, under one of the required acknowledgements that people will have to sign, there is some verbiage that, you know, the household, the organization, and/or clients within the city are within the city limits. So if there's desire to add more language about specifying the, bounding the geography of use of funds, there's a couple of different options for different languages. You know, I can go over them real briefly, just for the sake of time, but the first one's, the quickest one, where in one of the applications you would add, in the City of Urbana, or when the application questions, you would add, in the City of Urbana after one of the sentences, to specify it there. The next option is a little bit more robust, where you add a new question asking about, you know, what is the, to the, what degree is the impact in Urbana? And then option three is almost the same as that one, except there's a little bit of a clause in there about the service provider being located within the city limits. Option four kind of takes that one clause, which is asking about the service provider, and makes it its own separate question. And then the last part is just an option to add some language in the concept plan itself, talking about the purpose to use these funds within the city limits, or for the benefit of the city limits. So they're not all mutually exclusive. I don't want necessarily read every word, but just, just hopefully there's some words on the page, so if that's where the discussion follows, there's a little bit of something there. And that's, that's really all I had, and we're just here for questions.
Mary Alice?
So thank you, Will, for, for trying to put some verbiage to my concept here. I just kind of wanted to give people a background. You know, I think that we, we are allocating money that has been given to the City of Urbana that have federal rules. And those federal rules contain reporting requirements, they contain how money is handled. And I think that since we are basically allocating money to these other groups, we don't have any control over some of that stuff. So I think it's to the benefit that we ensure some level of financial responsibility. And, and I think that it, it looks like, Will, what you've suggested here is an acknowledgement, and I'd actually like to say that it is a requirement that they submit a state certificate or another political jurisdiction. And if they don't, then I'm sure RPC could call them and say, you need to have this. Just as some background, if, if something does happen to the funds, they're not used for the appropriate classification, the City of Urbana is then on the hook for that money. The federal government will come back to us and say that we have to repay the money because we misspent it. In addition, I spoke to Sheila today, and she said if we are found to be negligent, that the federal government can go back and look at all of our federal grant programs for five years. So this is really kind of a safety measure that I was proposing. And I guess my, my other question is, I mean, I would take off the if at the very beginning because I think it is, should be a requirement, but I don't want to leave any type of organization out, so I don't know how exhaustive the corporation, non-for-profit, limited partnership, I don't know if that's just exhaustive of any potential kind of group that could apply for these funds. So I guess those are my comments.
Sharice?
I'm guessing, what I'm thinking is in terms of, kind of in, in relation to what Mary Alice was talking about, but also if the city can, if the city is capable of actually asking for ARPA funds for a particular project that may be underway that would otherwise qualify, but we're not, but not a limited live, you know, LLC or anything like that, that's what I would like for. An example, I may just be, be out with it, regarding like the Ellis Drive subdivision stuff that needs to, that we've, we've asked for the city to, to possibly use ARPA funds if it's possible, and for them to be able to, to take care of, for them to have that at their expense and not at the expense of the residents. Would the city fill out that application, or would you require our, the little organization, the Ellis Drive subdivision?
Oh, I see what you're asking. Would it be the city or the subdivision applying?
Right.
Our recommendation would be whoever's going to perform the work, so that would be the city.
Uh huh.
And I think, and I don't know if this is a point of confusion, but the organizations that you listed, or the types that you listed, corporations, LLC, that's specific to that certificate, not to who's eligible to apply. So that's why we included the if, like you mentioned, not to be too exclusive to who is able to apply. We just included it there because not every entity will have that type of certificate available to provide.
Are there alternatives to that type of certificate, that they would be able to talk about handling funds appropriately?
Right. You know, I'm not aware of them. I don't know who might be an expert in that particular topic, but we did ask, I mean, that's, parts of the rest of the application are designed in such a way to try to get as much information as possible, to understand kind of how ready and willing and capable these entities are in managing the funds. And some of that is, you know, it is a risk, obviously, anytime you open up an application process like this. But it, yeah, I mean, we're, we're relying on the questions, the documentation provided, you know, and if we don't feel comfortable with an entity, then that is up to you to not award the entity. I say we, but I'm not making these decisions.
I think that the one thing that kind of put off like warning bells in my head was, of those questions, one of the responses was they had mishandled grant funds. And so it was, it was one of the, one of the four, you know, of the questions, one of the four categories. I'm like, well, if they've mishandled grant funds, we should not be giving them, we shouldn't be awarding them money. It shouldn't be part of that particular question. It should be something that is, right? So that, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I don't know kind of how to figure that out, you know, from the jump without waiting for the applications to come in, and then kind of individually checking on each agency. I'm not really sure how else to go about it, but I think it is a good point that there should be some sort of scan, maybe in advance, to see if there are any other red flags that didn't emerge on the application. But I don't know exactly what that would be besides just getting references or, you know, looking at their experience, which are part of the questions, you know, asking what their experience is managing other grants, what their experience is carrying out the project they're proposing, or the work that they're proposing. Other than that, I can't, not really sure what other safety there is.
So the if makes sense there, is what I'm hearing you say, because there's only certain organizations that could legally get that.
Right.
Okay. And then, so in, and maybe this is down the road, but if I remember correctly, once the kind of the application is signed by the city, and you know, we have a contract out with the group, usually there's some stipulation in there that says they adhere to all the policies and procedures that are governed by this thing, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, there will, there will be a contract drawn up for each entity awarded funds, with some of those assurances, that if they don't comply with the reporting, or this or that, that they will be responsible for returning the funds, or reimbursing the funds that were mismanaged, or misused, or not accounted for. And I will say also another check that's in place is that we're anticipating doing a reimbursement system where entities will spend money and get reimbursed, maybe on a quarterly basis or some sort of regular basis. That might not work for every project or entity, but that's kind of the default approach, just as another way to kind of build in some accountability. Okay, all right, thank you.
Grace?
I think that's a, an important point here about making sure that the funds are used properly. I'm still a little confused on how that applies, because it sounds like there's a, this group of corporations, nonprofits, LLCs, all that, and then there's also things like the city, township, schools, park districts and stuff that don't fall into that certificate of good standing, right? And so we're saying we don't want to limit it to just that, but you want to make sure that those groups are in good standing. Is that right?
Well, I mean, if we keep the word if in there, then, then it doesn't eliminate people who don't fall into those groups. So if they have this type of business organization, et cetera, then they should be able to provide a letter. If they're not part of those groups, then they don't have to provide a letter, basically. I don't know, and that's what we were talking about. I don't know how to, what's the equivalent for the governments to...
Right, so we wanted to utilize the certification process, the certificate of good standing, as a way to check. It's just that that certificate doesn't apply to every single entity that exists. So we're just kind of clarifying, if you are one of these entities, we expect to see your certificate of good standing.
And it sounds like we'll have to take a lot of it case by case, too, as they come in.
Right.
And then as far as the options for the geographic restrictions...
Excuse me, I think, can I just, I think if we, in the interest of efficiency, if we can come to a understanding on this language first, and then move on to the options. And we can just do it by a straw poll. Is this language something that you would like to include as part of the concept plan? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to geographic then. Go ahead.
And on the good standing one, I'm sorry, I wasn't done with that one, but I think it also would be helpful to make it clear that those aren't the only organizations that are eligible, right? Saying like, if you fall under these, you have the good standing letter, and you might be another organization that doesn't. For the options, I think I lean towards the first one of having it in the narrative. I think there's a lot of nuances that's hard to describe in the CU area, how they might be based in Urbana, or serve Urbana, and all of those things. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. And I brought this up just so that we could be prepared to think about it, not necessarily to say that, oh, we're not counting champagne businesses that serve Urbana, or anything like that. I just think, things for us to consider and prioritize, and if we don't have it in there, then it's, you know, then we get all of like Danville's applications, or something hypothetically. So I think important to just focus on Urbana, so I would go with option one is what I'm leaning towards.
I just want to point out that on some of the topics that we want to fund, like gun violence and homelessness, there's kind of a fluidity between the cities, right? I mean, those are, if an organization is dealing with gun violence in champagne, that helps Urbana in some kind of way. And I think we can still go with option one, Grace, but I just, I just want to not penalize organizations that kind of originate out of champagne, or are addressing kind of the movement of homeless people throughout the community, so.
Mary Alice.
I guess, Chris, I guess to that, I would say, I would, you know, the gun violence in our community knows no geographic boundaries, and so it's not that the organization is based in champagne, that's not my understanding of this option, rather that it serves the public of the City of Urbana. And of course, if we have gun violence issues, which we do, and we just, while this meeting, got a notification of another violent offense on Sunday evening, you know, they will be, hopefully, whomever is working on gun violence, will be working with people, residents, people who pass through Urbana. So I think that that kind of serves that thing, even if they have to go get the service in champagne. Primarily, to me, it's important that they're serving the residents of Urbana, regardless of where that service is housed.
Or businesses.
Or businesses, thank you.
Any other comments?
Can we get a straw, are you ready for a straw poll on where you lean?
Are we just doing option one?
Well, that's what we have, seems to be the one you're leaning towards. Everyone favor option one? Five and, six and a half, or five and a half? Okay. All right, you have your direction there, so we're ready to move on to, can you move the resolution, then?
I suppose. I moved it.
Oh, you did?
Someone needs to second it.
Okay.
Who seconded it?
I don't remember it being moved or seconded.
Yeah, I presented it.
I will second it, if you need a second.
Okay, well, it's moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion. Jay.
I'm sorry, this might not be the appropriate time, but I wasn't here last week, and I couldn't find the rubric that was discussed. Am I remembering correctly that, and I'm sorry again if this is the wrong time to do this, that people who have received grants from, say, the City of Urbana, or other local governments are actually, would be likely to get the low end, or a zero, on that section of the rubric? I bring that up kind of related back to Mary Alice's point of, if we're looking for organizations with a track record that have done a good job of managing grants, while I understand that part of the goal is to distribute that, those resources more broadly, I worry that that could be a little bit counterintuitive, or potentially even detrimental to that attempt to have that accountability. And I, I'm sorry, I can't find it, got distracted, and like I said, might have the wrong minute.
Yeah, I think that that was, and I think in our conversations, that was a consideration, and that is, that is how the rubric is structured right now. I think, I think that our thought was basically that, our understanding was that we did want to also provide an opportunity for people that have not been able to take advantage of City of Urbana resources previously, that they would be able to take advantage of those resources. So that was, that was one point in favor of building in that question. And you're right that those, prioritizing kind of experience, and then also prioritizing not having previously received funds can, would kind of, might kind of work against each other. I guess the, on either end, they're like one question in the like 12-question rubric, so I don't know that we were concerned about it having too dramatic of an effect. And then I guess our other thought was that, that whatever score is determined is just advisory, so those aren't going to be determining funding allocations, or any of those. So I think those were, that was kind of our, our thought process going in. If there are concerns about that, we can address them, but that was kind of what our thoughts going in.
Yeah, just to reiterate, it does, in a way, I wouldn't say disadvantages experienced agencies, because I think those agencies have an advantage in a lot of other questions and material. The goal is just to try to give a little bit of a boost, or a call out to those other agencies, like JD mentioned, that didn't have the same level of experience.
Thank you, that's helpful, because it seemed a little odd. And just to clarify, so all of the questions are, within the rubric are weighted equally, then? So then, again, if, even if a couple are kind of counterbalancing each other, overall, the application will be more rounded.
Right.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Grace.
If I could say a quick thing on that, too. It looks like in here, so it's just from the City of Urbana in the last three years, too, right? Not from any organizations or any timeframe. Yeah, that's what was my other point, too, was to, yes, specify for, I think lots of people have maybe had some issues finding it, that it's, yeah, the rubric says just City of Urbana, at least. Yeah, so maybe if we say, is it local governments, or just the City of Urbana? Because the main question versus the rubric boxes say different things. But that it's on your concept plan website, which is a website with a lot of good stuff in there, and so it's on the introduction tab, under the main concept plan, and halfway down has the rubric and draft questions. But I think there have been some troubles with finding that, because I think most people aren't looking in the introduction. And I think we talked about before, having that on the application tab, right? But I don't know if there's also a way to make it a little easier to find in the meantime on the main concept plan.
Sure, and I, we were kind of waiting to populate the application tab until the application itself was available, but I agree, it should also go there, and we could go ahead and put it there now, before the application is available, just so those draft materials are easier to find. Does that make sense, that separate application? Okay.
Yes, thank you. And I don't know if we think we need to specify, or that's a thing to come to later about if it is any local government, or just the City of Urbana?
I.
I'm looking at that question, and I think it is, it's one that seems a bit broader, right? Because the question says local government, but then, you know, as you move through the numbers, it does talk about, like, one, for example, that the applicant has received local financial assistance over the last three years, but it was a small amount, or not from the City of Urbana. So I guess, I, I know I'm coming to this process late, but I'm not sure what the intent of this question is, of like, we're saying if you've received any funding from any local government, and what do we mean by local? Is that the cities? Is that the county? You know, is that ARPA-specific? That question is really broad. Thank you for finding, I know, I knew I'd found it before, but, and so in some places, it looks like it's talking about any local government, and some places, it looks like it's talking about just Urbana. But then if you look at the ranking, it looks like, well, if you got some money from somebody else, but it wasn't us, it's not that big a deal. So I think that question does make some work, so.
I believe on the application, the questions that the applicants will see, it says local government, including township, municipal, or county. And then those, those different, those different categories, and the numerical rankings reflect that. So if it was a small amount, and from a non-Urbana local government, then that wouldn't, that wouldn't penalize, or that would, that wouldn't incentivize as much as, so not receiving any local money, that would be like receiving a small amount from another local government, and then receiving a large amount from the City of Urbana would be the one that receives the smallest number of points on that question.
And I think there's also a concern about not using ARPA funds to fund things that already were, you know, receiving funds and ongoing, I think that was, you know, part of that's the one-time nature of ARPA funds, and trying to tie that into the application was, if you're kind of already in a process of getting other funds, you know, that's not necessarily the best use for ARPA funds, so that kind of logic built into that question as well.
Jay, and then Mary Alice.
So I have a kind of a follow-up on that, though, because you could have an organization that has a great program that's using, you know, our social service funding, and then is applying for something that's different. So are we saying that they shouldn't get more money because they're doing good work over here, we don't want them to do different good work with this funding?
So I think it's the application, which is a project tentatively being scored, so if an organization gets funds for other projects, that would show up as being well documented for use of funds, but if they have something new they're adding on to that, I don't think that would be, you want to dock them for their other programs of receiving funds, it's this particular project that's being proposed. I think that was more the intent of, you know, this project isn't funded from other streams, not necessarily this organization isn't funded from other streams. But if the word, wording on that is not clear, then.
Mary Alice, then Sharice.
Yeah, so if that's the intent, we need to change it, because it says, "Has the applicant already received?" Rather than the project, if that's the intent. I actually was going to propose something radical, to just cut it. And, and really, I mean, we have a variety of governmental entities that are already distributing some of their ARPA funds. If there's something, you know, Chris brought up gun violence, if there's a program that could expand what they're already doing, and champagne, for example, wouldn't we want to be able to support them? If they've received ARPA funding for, from champagne, then they would be, get a lower score on this question, because it's a local government. So I'm just going to float that out there, if we just cut that.
Sharice.
Okay, in floating, you shall. I just wanted to say that I'm thinking in terms of, do we really want to fund, do you really want to leave a loophole for someone to double-dip? Meaning, they get, they get ARPA funds from champagne, and then they turn around and get ARPA funds from Urbana. Example that I would use is someone who maybe resides in champagne, that gets ARPA funds for something here, that, then their business is in Urbana, and so then they turn around and get ARPA funds for their business here, too. There, I think there should be, I do think.
They have to be expanding their services, and that is one of the things that we generally fund, is expand the capacity.
Yeah, and we do that, but we also have other grants that help do that. That's why I'm saying, so it, do we want to leave a loophole that someone could definitely take advantage of, and putting, putting our financial stuff in jeopardy by, with someone else that, that may not be as, may not have the integrity that we would, that's, that's all I'm, I'm trying to, that's all I'm, that's what I'm thinking of, I'm sorry, it's maybe because I basically don't trust how that can go. So, that's what I'm saying.
I think Carol wanted to weigh in on that.
Yeah, just before you get too hung up on, on the rubric and stuff, as JD mentioned, it's a guide, it's, it's not going to, it's just guidance. So you all will make the decisions, and each of the applicants, unless they've been disqualified for something, will come and make a presentation. So you'll be able to kind of, you know, depending on the nature of it, you'll be able to kind of dig into that, and then take in whatever they've told you, and then make your decisions accordingly. So just, you know, just don't want to get too hung up on the technical, because it's just a guide for you.
Jay.
It is a guide, but we're scoring people, right? So if we're saying, where do you fall, and you get a lower score because of the rubric, that impacts what we see, and what our evaluation is of these. And we're talking about having an opportunity to review anyone who might be eligible, but if the questions are confusing for people, we're going to unintentionally disqualify people. So I think it is important that we get the language precise, and I think we're seeing that there's some confusion on this question. And I, I think that the intent was, is admirable, right? We do want to make sure that folks who have not already benefited from available funding, or ARPA funding, have a fair shake at this. But I think it is something, too, again, there are lots of organizations who respond in a moment of crisis by expanding their staff, by, you know, taking on new initiatives. That is very common for nonprofits, that's very common for a lot of organizations that do really good work in the community. So if we're going to keep this question in here, and I think that, you know, one potential solution would be to take it out, and I think it is difficult, right? We're trying to balance two contradictory things. One is, we want more people to have access to this funding, the other is, we want to make sure that people who are already doing good work aren't getting disadvantaged for the fact that they're already doing good work. So I do think that getting the language around this, even though it's a guide, more precise is really important, because they're never even going to get to us if we don't get this right.
I will just clarify, there are no minimum score thresholds that would disqualify someone. A disqualification would simply mean they aren't in compliance with something, or didn't provide, or maybe even not didn't, but are refusing to provide adequate information. So I just want to clarify that there's not like a score, you know, threshold beneath which you will not have access to the information, or that they wouldn't be qualified.
Thank you, that's important clarification.
Everyone will have a shot, regardless of their score.
Grace.
Thanks for the discussion, I agree. I understand the intent of wanting to make sure people who haven't had funding get a chance at it as well. And my understanding, too, is that there wouldn't be necessarily anything wrong with, say, a county-wide nonprofit asking for money from champagne, from Urbana, from the county, for a county-wide program, as long as it's for different things, they're not double-funding the same project. So I think in that sense, I, I agree, I think with what's been brought up of, I think removing this from the rubric, but keep the question. I think the question is important, that that's part of the piece, is what, what's their funding history in the past? But I think that it's, because we have those conflicting things, it doesn't make as much sense to have it scored on the rubric. So I would propose we keep the question, and we have that information, we just don't have it be part of the rubric scoring.
Is that consistent with your proposal, Mary Alice?
Yeah, I think that's a great, great proposal.
Do we have a, Chris?
I guess what I would say is that I wouldn't mind if somebody's doing something really good, for example, a jobs program for young people, okay? And they got money from the champagne county ARPA money, and came here and wanted more money so they could double the number of employees. I would be okay with that kind of double-dipping, if it was a good thing. So I share your skeptic, caution regarding people double-dipping, or, you know, but I would double up on a good thing, if it was a good thing. But the solution, I think, is what Carol Mitten said, you're going to hear from them, they're going to be able to make a proposal, and we'll be able to make a decision, so.
Okay, so I, what I'm hearing is, there's a support for keeping the question in, but not using it as part of the scoring criteria. Does that make sense to everybody? Show of hands. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, five, four, okay. Five. I can't even count.
I'm short.
Oh, I didn't see your. Alrighty, okay, so that's three things that you've come to consensus on, are you still agreed to the 60-day application window? Going, going, gone.
Unless anyone's open for longer, but.
I don't think so, no.
I don't want that longer.
Okay, all right. So the new tentative ARPA implementation schedule, then, is included on the supplemental memorandum that was in your packet today, and we can see applications finalized and opened to the public by September 16th. It's a long time coming, but this is a great, great opportunity. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Plesenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Harsley?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. And extend our deep appreciation to the staff from the RPC, to Will Kolchowski, to Carol Mitten, to everyone who has worked on this, to get us to this point. All right, reports of officers. We have a report from Lily Wilcock, who is going to talk about the Illinois Bike Summit Strong Towns guest speaker. Make sure your mic is on. Make sure your mic is on.
Okay, now you can. All right. I didn't hear that pleasant echo, so... So I just have a couple of details about the day before the big Illinois Bike Summit. There is a guest keynote speaker, Chuck Marone from Strong Towns. I want to invite you all. It's a very special event that a lot of different community groups have banded together to make happen. It's happening on October 11th, and it's taking place as a collaboration between Champaign County Bikes, the City of Champaign, the City of Urbana, MTD-Champaign Center Partnership, the University of Illinois Department of Urban and Regional Planning, and the Student Sustainability Committee. Of all these agencies, they all had a hand in bringing the guest speaker Chuck Marone, the founder of Strong Towns, to the community that day. There are going to be three opportunities to hear from Chuck from Strong Towns. They're all public talks that he's giving. There's a 10:00 a.m. meeting at the Illinois Terminal in downtown Champaign. It's the fourth-floor conference room, the City View. This meeting will likely be geared kind of towards staff of both the cities, the university and MTD. It is free and completely open to the public. The second meeting is on campus. It's with the Department of Urban and Regional Affairs and the Student Sustainability Committee. The details of this meeting are actually still being worked out as... But it will be between 2:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., and I'll have more details on that later. They're taking a little bit of time right now to design an interactive activity for students and faculty and staff who are currently working through, you know, planning that activity right now. And then the third talk, and I think this is probably the most convenient and also one of the higher-level conversations that Chuck Marone has prepared, is at 5:30, and it's also at the Illinois Terminal, fourth floor again. And everyone's invited to this after 5:00, but still not too late, talk. Chuck Marone will be talking on the concept, the broader concept of Strong Towns and materials, a lot of the materials from his first book. If you're not familiar with Strong Towns, there is a site that has a lot of articles and a variety of local topics. And also, there's a book at Urbana Free Library and Champaign Public Library. The Urbana Free Library also has an audiobook, this on audiobook as well. And just if you're... Just as a quick, like, there's a lot of things that Strong Towns oftentimes covers, and they're oftentimes conversations that are really... Can be really hyper-local, but they cover a lot of fiscal ramifications of the last 100 years of growth and development patterns, which I think is an interesting conversation that we could certainly have in a local context here. And so there's a lot of overlap between fiscal and environmental resilience, and so Strong Towns is an interesting concept to kind of explore a lot more of those topics. This meeting will be advertised as a public meeting, and the public is welcome to join. No city business will be discussed at the meeting, and it's just an interesting talk from an interesting speaker. If you have any questions later on, feel free to email me or anyone in planning. Engineering is also helping out in coordinating this event, as well as Scott Test, especially as Chuck is an engineer. And I think that campus activity is going to have a lot of the transportation aspect with MTD. But I will... I'm always open for answering any questions tonight or later on.
And Lily will send around reminders as the date draws near.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you much. Oh, sorry, Grace.
Oh, I'm sorry. I only heard times. Did you say what day that was?
Oh, yeah, really fast and at the beginning. October 11th.
Okay, thank you.
And the larger Bike Summit is on the 12th. That's also open to the public. And then the 13th is more of a professional training day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. All right, we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is ordinance number 2022-09-036, which is an ordinance approving a major variance for parking at 1009 Stoughton Street. And this is ZBA case 2022-MAJ-04. And Marcus Ricci will be presenting.
Good evening, council. I promise not to kick any wires tonight on the computer so we can watch the presentation. Andrew Fell, on behalf of FLC 1009 West Stoughton LLC requests a major variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement by 60% to allow construction of a multifamily residential apartment building at 1009 Stoughton Avenue in the B3U General Business University zoning district. Table 137 of the Urbana zoning ordinance would have required 10 parking spaces for the current building that has recently been demolished and would require 13 parking spaces for the proposed building. At the August 10th special meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, they held a public hearing and considered the requested variance. The ZBA voted with six ayes and one nay to recommend that city council approve the requested variance as presented in the staff report. In 1981, an addition to the original single-family residence was built with a ground-level rear-loading parking area, turning the original residence into an eight-unit apartment building with 17 bedrooms. The building's parking area included only six parking spaces with none designated as an accessible space. An access drive off Stoughton along the north side of the house provided one additional parking space, bringing the total to seven parking spaces. The building and parking areas were demolished in late July of 2022 in preparation to build a new apartment building. The property is located on the south side of Stoughton, west of Harvey Street... Excuse me, east of Harvey Street. The site and adjacent properties to the northeast, south, and west are zoned B3U General Business University. All of the apartment buildings on this block of West Stoughton Street have rear-loading parking areas which are accessed by a mid-block alley. So here is that mid-block alley there. You can see the parking, rear-loading parking underground... Or on first level, the rear of the building was kind of on stilts, so parking underneath and apartments above. This is the zoning for the property. All the lavender is the B3U University Business. R5 is high-density multifamily residential to the west and south. And then the CRE is university-used property. And then this is the future land use, which shows this block and the block to the north as campus-mixed-use, and the property to the south and west as institutional, indicating continued future use by the university. As required by the zoning ordinance, staff published a legal notice in the News Gazette 15 days prior to the ZBA meeting to notify the public of the request and public hearing. Staff also sent letters to neighboring property owners and posted a public hearing sign on the property. Staff received one phone call opposing the requested variance that was included in the staff report. The applicant is currently building a three-story, 18-unit apartment building that meets all the development regulations of the B3U zoning district. The new building would add one bedroom compared to the old building. The configuration of the new building is single-bedroom and efficiency apartments rather than the mixture of one, two, three, and four-bedroom apartments that the previous building had. And one question that came up is, you know, why... What is the difference? Why does this building require more parking than the old building if there really is only one more bedroom? It's because that the zoning ordinance requires a higher ratio of parking per dwelling unit, not per bedroom, for smaller units. It goes from .7 bedrooms per... Sorry, .7 parking spaces per bedroom for larger dwelling units down to a half a bedroom for smaller dwelling units. The new parking area would have seven parking spaces, or six when one was marked to create an accessible space. One additional on-street parking space would be created when the curb cut for the old access drive would be closed. Staff believe that this additional on-street parking space provides a greater benefit as it is available to the general public. The zoning ordinance would require 13 spaces for the proposed building. The applicant proposes to have seven parking spaces, and therefore, the request is technically a 54% parking reduction. That's covered by the 60% parking reduction request. The ordinance required 10 parking spaces for the previous building. It provided only seven parking spaces, or 30% fewer than would have been required. It also had no accessible parking spaces. The applicant believes that the parking requirement can be reduced without negative impact for two reasons. First, the previous building did not provide the minimum number of parking spaces. Second, the number of parking spaces required is more than is needed to meet the demand for parking spaces for their building. The applicant stated they typically have a surplus of parking spaces that are not rented by building residents. These spaces are then made available to residents in other buildings owned by them for a higher rate than offered to the onsite residents. And then they're offered to the general public. Reducing the number of parking spaces required would reduce the number of surplus parking spaces for which property owners must then find renters. The applicant reported that for the subject property, no parking spaces were rented to building residents for 2021, 2022, and that four spaces were rented to non-residents and two spaces remained vacant. We've got some photographs of the property. Some of these are Google Street View or aerials from online. This is looking at the previous property from the north. This is... Stoughton Street is on the bottom of the screen. This is looking at the rear of the property. From the south, you can see the parking spaces underneath and the apartments above. The shot on the right, this is the previous parcel with the parking area underneath. The right-hand photo is one I took. It was during the summer, when there aren't typically a lot of students around, but there weren't any cars parked there. Take from that what you will. This is the previous building footprint. You can see the six parking spaces on the south end and the access drive here. It's possible that two cars could have been fit in there. This is the preliminary building footprint. It's not really relevant to today's case. Today's case is about reducing the minimum parking requirement. So what you see is a six-unit floor plan, and then it was three stories, so that would be the 18... Sorry, 18 units, all single-bedroom. This is the parking information that was provided by the applicant. These, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 buildings. Bedroom data, parking space data. On average, in, I think this was 2020... 2021, 2022 data, out of the 170 parking spaces that were available, 29% of them were rented to their residents. 21% were rented to residents of other buildings of theirs in the area. 50% were rented to the general public. Let's see. Nope. The difference between the 50 and the... Let's see. Let me flip that around. The non-resident was both residents and public combined. And then the vacancy rate is things that weren't rented at all. So overall, for their eight buildings, they had a 50% vacancy rate. Again, take from that what you will, whether there's not demand or whether they perhaps were charging too much. But in any event, they have parking that remains vacant. These are some shots that I took of... This one is east down the alley. This is parking underneath this building. This is parking for the buildings to the south. You can see some vacant spaces. This was in August of this year. This fenced-off areas where the building was demolished. City staff... City planning staff did our own parking study of campus area multifamily residential buildings in 2016, 2017. It wasn't the entire city. It was an area that focused around the Lincoln, Nevada property for a previous case. At that time, the current owner of this subject property reported that only two of the six spaces in the parking area were rented by building residents, and the other four spaces were rented to non-residents, whether that was their own, people from other buildings, or to the general public. So again, residents in that building did not require all of the parking spaces that that building was required to provide, and that was in 2016. Looking at the variance criteria, Section 113 of the Urbana zoning ordinance lays out six criteria that the Zoning Board of Appeals is supposed to make their findings based on. These should then be the bases upon which city council makes its decision. The staff report reviews those variance criteria. I will summarize them for you, but I'm happy to answer more detailed questions. Staff feel that the pedestrian environment and high minimum parking requirements are special circumstances or practical difficulties that weigh in favor of granting the variance. To redevelop this property to its former or similar occupancy, it would be economically and/or physically difficult to provide the minimum parking requirement. It would likely result in another building on stilts, which is undesirable, especially in a walkable neighborhood. Future redevelopment of nearby sites would likely result in similar requests for variances from the minimum parking requirement. If those variances would also be warranted, staff feel that the requested variance would not be a special privilege to the property owner and weighs in favor of granting the variance. The applicant purchased the property with its former building and non-conforming parking that had been operating in this fashion for decades. Staff feel that the variance request is not a result of a situation created by the petitioner and weighs in favor of granting the variance. Staff feels that the variance would not alter the essential character of this high-density residential neighborhood and weighs in favor of granting the variance. Staff believe... Sorry. The most likely nuisance created by the variance is that a resident or visitor would park in a neighboring building's parking area. Staff believe that faced with the choice of this and getting a ticket or parking elsewhere on a street, a reasonable person would park on the street rather than having their vehicle towed, negating the potential nuisance and weighing in favor of the granting the variance. Finally, staff believe that the requested reduction in parking spaces is the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance and weighs in favor of granting the variance. Referring back to the Zoning Board of Appeals discussion, ZBA held the public hearing on August 10th and considered the requested variance. The applicant answered questions from the board. Board discussion centered on past experiences with difficulty finding parking on the street and also university measures taken to reduce car ownership by students and on campus in general. ZBA voted with six ayes and one nay to recommend that city council approve the requested variance, exceeding the two-thirds minimum approval requirement for a major variance. The findings are summarized in the staff report. Staff concur with this recommendation. City council has the following options in this case: approving the ordinance, approving the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or to deny the ordinance. And that is the end of my staff report. I am happy to answer questions.
James.
James?
Yeah, do we, thank you for the presentation, very thorough. On the chart that had the parking spaces that were rented and not rented, did we get any kind of information about what's being charged for those parking spaces?
No.
Because that's a, it's a curious situation that half the parking spaces that would alleviate the congestion on the streets are not being rented. And that, we don't have any control over that, I don't think, but it would be a very interesting thing to know in this kind of circumstance. So if we could get that information in the future and these kinds of things, I would appreciate it.
How, okay.
I'm sure there's landlords for all those locations and we can ask them what they're charging for parking. We did, we did know that they're charging some for people who live there and more for people who don't live there. I'd be curious what that difference looks like too. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Grace? Mary Alice?
So along those lines, because I had a very similar question. It looked like somebody from the plan commission said that they're proposing or they rent their other spaces for seven hundred and fifty dollars in their, in their notes. Is that correct?
Per year.
Per year?
They said that they charged seven hundred and fifty for these spaces at this particular subject property or they did this past year.
They did, but they don't necessarily, they won't necessarily do that when they improve the building.
Right. It could be more, it could be less. It is an economic decision. Do you, do you make more money by renting them for less but not having any vacancies? Or do you charge a lot but not rent any because it's so high? That's a...
So if I remember correctly, when we changed the parking requirements, two, three, four bedroom was fifty percent. Is that correct?
Rather than misquote myself, I'll just pull up the book.
So this is even more than a two, three, four bedroom request is my point.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
So if they were, if they were two-bedroom apartments with eighteen bedrooms, that would be nine apartments, right? I mean, sorry. Eight, that would be nine, yeah, that'd be nine parking spaces.
Yes.
Okay, so this is more than even a two-bedroom?
Right, so for efficiency or one-bedroom, it's point seven for every bedroom.
Right.
If it was two or more bedroom, it's half for every bedroom.
Right, for every bedroom.
For every bedroom.
Right. Yeah, so it'd be nine.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Grace, and then Sharice.
Thanks, there's been a lot in this and watching some of the ZBA meeting. It seems like there's a lot of things going into it here that I'm trying to suss out what is relevant to this particular variance here. Because there's the issue of the on-street parking, there's the issue of the space rental fee. I think the question is here is are there any special conditions that would help to ensure or reassure the public that residents won't be a burden to on-street parking? Where hypothetically, if they have eighteen cars and not one of those students is willing to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for a parking spot, now they have eighteen cars added to the on-street parking issue. So my question would be, is there a way that you see logistically on some of those special conditions of this approval that we could have any agreement with the developer in saying that, you know, residents must have onsite parking or that it be included in their thing? I mean, it just seems like there's no assurance for the public why we should take that chance. I understand the practicality in making walkable cities and that they're not being used, but I think that there's just not really any assurance for the public that says that this wouldn't happen.
That is correct.
And do you think there is any, I mean, we have the special conditions, but I'm asking like, is that something not possible or just not practical to ask of the developer?
Well, you could grant a lower variance, a smaller variance, so that they would have to provide more than they want to at that spot. You know, it's, it's difficult because, you know, if a two-family home goes in that's required to have four parking spaces and they charge extra for those spaces, as most, most planning principles are that you charge a fee for a good or service that a person partakes in. So if, if they don't have a car, then people who don't have a car aren't forced to pay for a parking space for that car. If you make them have the required parking by making them put in all of those spaces, then even if somebody doesn't have a car, they end up paying because the developer has to pass that cost on to all of the residents in the building.
Yes, it just seems like there's got to be some kind of compromise here. Because one option would be not having the variance and the developer has to make thirteen spaces, has to have the building on stilts. That's a huge cost, probably more than he would lose in providing parking for his residents there. I think that here the issue isn't having more parking. I don't think more parking spaces is the issue necessarily. I think the issue is making sure that the residents who do have cars actually use the parking lot and not the street and that they could have some way to control that they have about the same number of residents with cars as they do parking spaces.
I think probably the most, to me as a planner, the most salient point is the new building is going to have one more bedroom than the previous building. So the number of additional residents that are likely going to be there from the previous condition is one. And the congestion that the neighborhood was experiencing before is going to be increased by one resident and possibly one car. Is that sufficient enough of a concern to essentially not replicate the condition that was there before? Which was insufficient parking according to the zoning ordinance. You could say reduce it by fifty percent rather than sixty percent and that would essentially acknowledge the previous insufficient parking, but not allow it to get worse. And then they would have to figure out where to find that extra space. That might be at one of their other buildings.
I just, I don't think that it's about the number of spaces necessarily. I think that their request of number of spaces sounds reasonable. I think that there needs to be some kind of a stipulation, a special condition, some way that the public could be reassured that the residents are going to use those spots. I don't think there's a point in building all thirteen of them and they still don't get used.
And, and I think that is hard because I think if you maybe started doing surveys and tours, that this building's residents are probably likely doing what all the other residence buildings are doing. So if you put some sort of condition on this building's residents, then that would be treating them differently than all of the surrounding buildings' residents who are then allowed to park wherever they want. Because essentially, it would be like, oh, if we find your car on the street and you're supposed to be parking in that building, are they going to get a ticket for parking on a public street? That doesn't seem...
Yeah, and that seems the issue is that if they are allowed to park on the street, then that's why I think the design is important here, the decision that we make with how many parking spaces are built and then how they can be used. So I understand that, you know, residents have the right to park on the street, but I think that there, I would, I would love for this to come to committee of the whole. I would love to talk to the developer because I think that there could be, I would hope, some kind of an understanding where they are, to my understanding, is they're getting, this helps them a lot financially to the entire design of their building, not having to build thirteen spaces. So it seems to me that some of that cost savings could be passed on to their residents and say, your rent includes free parking because over the years, they're still going to make more than having to build those thirteen spaces and just a way to incentivize, kind of reduce that loophole that there's probably people living there who can park on the street for free and not pay seven hundred and fifty dollars to park in the lot that's there. And even if we build more spaces, they're still going to be empty and it doesn't help the problem. So do you think there is a way to do that? Like, is that to the developer or do you think that's something legally the city can't stipulate? I mean, the special conditions?
That gets into mandated affordable parking and, and getting into a property owner's, how much rent they're going to charge. And I do, I don't know if the city is doing that anywhere else. And if they're not doing that anywhere else, then this might not be the place or opportunity to try doing that. Because then, then if you mandate affordable parking here, then does that become a citywide policy where every development that comes through, we're going to get into your parking charges and...
I mean, possibly, because I mean, also you're saying in here that you expect that when new businesses or new residents get redeveloped in this particular part of campus, that they, you expect that they will also be asking for the same variance. So I mean, I think that there, I would think that there would be some room for that to say, if you're asking for this special variance or the special circumstance from the city, we're going to ask for some special request from you.
So another way might, of thinking it might be, you know, if the zoning board of appeals gets the same request over and over for building a second principal structure on a property so that somebody can have an accessory dwelling unit. One of the suggestions that then sometimes comes to staff is, hey, staff, you get this request often and it's often granted and it's never not granted. Maybe there is something in our zoning ordinance that ought to be changed about that requirement. If we get multiple requests to reduce the parking requirement and they are often granted for valid reasons, it might be that the parking minimums are too high. And I know we have brought that to council in the past to try and reduce them in certain instances. But that is a bigger question that city council has to think about or plan commission does.
Carol, did you want to comment?
Well, I'd like Marcus to explain that sometimes we have special use permits and conditional use permits in front of the council and they may be conditioned, whereas a variance may not be conditioned. It's either granted or not granted. Is that correct?
Variances can't have conditions on them. It's usually tied though to a site plan that's submitted as part of it. This, you know, had a preliminary building footprint. If you wanted to say, I would like to see maybe an additional two parking spaces elsewhere, possibly the easiest requirement would simply be, the zoning ordinance allows for accessory off-site parking to be used. And this is where, in a situation like this, there are nearby buildings that the same property owner owns. They could be required to contract out spaces at a nearby building that has surplus parking that nobody's renting. A distance could be stipulated so that you're not, you know, forcing somebody to walk six hundred feet to their building. It could be a building across the street. That would then allow this building to be built in an efficient manner with these seven parking spaces that are in this, you know, preliminary site footprint. We do have minimum sizes for car parking spaces, so it's not like you can just magically put more spaces there. So you could require parking within a certain distance. That could be a condition. I think that is probably more reasonable and practicable and enforceable than trying to make the residents use the parking that is provided. But you're still going to get into those questions because there's nothing that can force somebody to use that space over a space that's on the street as far from a planning standpoint that I can see. Other people might have other ideas and I'd be glad to listen.
Sharice?
Okay, what, I guess I have a few questions and a, and a few comments. Okay, what is the occupancy, is the occupancy of this building now all students?
I have no idea.
You have no idea?
Yeah, we don't regulate that.
So it doesn't make sense, and I say that to say this, it doesn't make sense to try to compare what the occupancy is now, which is two, one and two-bedroom apartments to eighteen efficiencies.
Right, and there were some three and four-bedroom unit apartments.
Right, okay, so, because my, from, from what you're telling me and from my experience in living in efficiency apartments, is that with efficiency apartments, when it's that, students that drive will want to park. They will want a place and that would, that could more, that could more easily equal up to eighteen new cars on the street like Grace was saying than having one, two-bedroom apartments where there's possibly families and there may be only one person driving a car. Not to mention the fact, the other thing regarding the, the seven hundred and fifty dollar rental for a space. Who does that? That's the other thing. And it's like, duh, of course it's not going to be rented, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And you're saying it's just students, but even if it's a family. That's a cute little piece of addition to the rant. Number, number three, they've already gotten a variance like right now where there is ten spaces required and they only have to, they're only supplying seven. So they've gotten a special variance on this before. It says parking spaces provided, seven with no accessible spaces, parking spaces required, ten, former building.
No variance was granted. It's simply that...
They just what? They did it illegally then?
It's been operated like this for a long time.
But they didn't come to Urbana to get the ten parking spaces when they should have had, I mean, seven, when they should have had ten?
It's, it's possible that in nineteen ninety-one, the rates were different. The comparison here was what the zoning ordinance would have required now for that size of building.
Okay, so what was the size when the building was? You don't know what the zoning was when it was built?
I, I can check into it and, and get back to you with what the parking would have been required back in nineteen eighty-one when this was built.
Well, it says ten on the little chart.
Well, that is based on today's requirements, not nineteen eighty-one's requirements.
Okay, so I would like, I would like to know that then. And now, and now the, the required spaces are thirteen and they, they want seven?
Yes.
And no, no accessible, no disability space?
State law requires that an accessible space is provided when somebody there requests it, which allows, you know, for additional parking. If nobody there at the building requires it, it gives an extra space. But as soon as a resident requires accessible parking, then they have to re-stripe it and put in the symbol and then accessible parking is there.
Okay.
And that's, that's standard at all of our developments. Well, throughout the state, it's not just the city.
Okay, and, and they, the only way I can see that those parking spaces not be filled is if they continue to charge seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for somebody living in a squirrel hole, which is what an efficiency is. I don't really, I, I do not see that we should, I mean, I'm not saying we should make them do thirteen spaces, but in my experience, and I lived in an efficiency building that had two one-bedroom, three one-bedroom apartments, and everybody used their space. And sometimes they parked on the street, but the spaces were mostly full. And then again, I wasn't being charged for parking in a space where I was already paying rent.
And I think one of the things that isn't coming into the conversation is what is the apartment rent? It's possible the apartment rent is low, it's possible that it's high. It's possible that they're dividing the fees up into the housing for people and the housing for cars and charging...
And it's possible that they should just be charging rent and people have parking so that they're safely, they can go to their abode in a safe manner. That's another possibility that I would like to see, that you don't charge for parking because you're paying rent. And you're talking about a piece of concrete, basically.
What do you do for people that don't have a car?
They don't have to park there. If people don't have a car, it doesn't, generally, I don't know about anybody else, but I know I would have guests from time to time. How does that hurt the... How does that hurt the, the, the building owner for a parking space to not be used?
Now, I guess what I'm saying is, if somebody doesn't own a car, you're still charging them for-
You don't charge them for the parking. They get charged for rent. They're paying rent.
Okay.
I'm going to intervene here. We're getting away from the criteria that you're supposed to be following to do this variance. Mary Alice, did you have questions?
Actually, can I make a motion?
You may make a motion.
All right, I want to send back to committee of the whole ordinance number 2022-09-036, an ordinance approving a major variance parking at 1009 Stoughton Street, case number ZBA 2022 MAJ04.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion?
Mary Alice.
Jay. Oh, then Mary Alice.
I just, to provide a different perspective, because I, I hear that there's a lot of concerns about the parking, where people are going to park. I think, looking at, it sounds like this has been done, kind of the parking usage in the area, looking at how close to campus this is, considering the fact that there are a lot of students, quite frankly, especially folks who might be needing an efficiency apartment, might not be as likely to have a car, right, depending on finances. Like, there are a lot of different factors we're not taking into consideration. So, while I hear that of, we might like to see that if someone's going to have a place that they provide parking for free, I don't think that that is appropriate for what we're looking at. I think that there are lots of reasons why the developer might have good reasons to say that parking's not needed. So, I just think it, it's, it's worthy of further discussion, but I think that it's worth noting, too, you know, what's in the memo, what's been presented from staff, and what came up in the ZBA hearings, I think, shows that there is another side to this, too, in terms of the fact that that parking may not be needed.
And Mary Alice.
So, just to be clear, I was ready to vote no on this. And Kevin, you actually, sorry, Marcus, I was looking at Kevin's name. You convinced me that there might be a solution here. So, I, I do want to say, usually when there are PUDs or zoning changes, it's 250 feet, right, from, the letters are mailed out to, to owners.
Yes.
Not residents.
Correct.
All right, so, I, I do want to call out specifically Judy Checker, who called you. So, thank you very much for taking that and providing that public input, who lives around the corner from the site, and I would bet it's the only person who lives and owns that place that is within 250 feet. Everything else has gone to the landlords. So, of course, they're not going to say anything. So, we're talking about a resident here. I probably live in, in the area, I live in the 800 block in, in West Urbana, that is the most congested, that has, and the reason, that's one of the reasons that we have parking permits. There are no parking permits in this area. So, I do think it is relevant that we consider congestion. And, and I'm, I, I thought it was an interesting idea to require parking within a certain area. I thought that that could be something to be explored. I guess my big question there would be, we don't want to put other people out of compliance. So, I, I, I mean, I think it's something to ask of, of the person. Originally, I was thinking I would go down to 10 spaces, nine or 10 is, nothing below nine, which is 50%, which is equivalent to a two-bedroom requirement. When we had the conversation about changing the rules, there is a reason that we have a higher proportion of parking spaces for one-bedroom inefficiencies, specifically because those people are more likely to have cars. I will tell you outright that there are a lot of parking spaces that aren't being rented, and it is because the rates are so high. Now, that's their choice. If they want to have people pay $50 a month versus paying $150 a month, they're willing to eat that. That, that's completely their choice. But I, I do think that we need to ensure what the city's responsibilities are, which is to ensure that we don't cause more congestion, more issues for people who park on the street. I'll say, also, in, in the city of Champaign, in the areas in campus town, they now have permit parking on the street. Like, you actually have a specific parking space, I think, like a stretch of land, because they got rid of some other parking requirements. There's nothing like that here. So, that's, the only reason I was willing to make the motion, send it back to committee, was to explore further options. But I do think that this building, while I support having more one-bedroom inefficiencies in Urbana, I do think that we need to be cognizant of the neighborhood and, and what we may or may not be putting at risk. Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. I think where this becomes also technically relevant in our decision is that one of the things to consider is that this variance request is not the result of a situation or condition having knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. I think that one could definitely argue that charging $750 a year for one parking space could be something that is creating this condition of the high vacancy that they're requesting for. So, I think that that is something for us to consider here. I think it does come into play. And I appreciate sending it back to committee of the whole, or sending it to committee of the whole. I would like some more time to digest and hear from the public, and hear from the developer, and see if there are some ways that we can come to some kind of compromise to ensure the public that it's not going to be a burden to onsite parking. I think if the developer is so confident that they're not going to have their spaces full, that there aren't going to be more than six or seven people with cars in their building, then they could make some kind of effort to show that, or have some kind of protections or stipulations in there. So, I'm looking forward to more conversation, and I think that there can be some creative solutions. I understand the more efficiency apartments, and more walkable, and that the university's reducing cars and all that. So, I'm not convinced that more spaces are needed. My concern is that, no matter how many spaces there are, people are still going to park on the streets because it's cheaper and free. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, well, the clerk, that's, the motion on the floor is to send this to committee of the whole. Will the clerk please call the roll? Voice vote. Sure. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. We'll go to committee of the whole.
Are there any other questions that I can research ahead of time, so, other than what the previous zoning ordinances, requirements were for the previous building, so that it can be a more fruitful discussion?
Sharice.
Well, my questions were basically, what is the occupancy, the population, the demographic of the, who's occupying now, and rent, what the rent is, and what the, is, and how that falls into with the rental cost of the parking space.
Okay. I will check and see if that's information that I'm even able to ask about, but I will check into it.
Mary Alice.
I would like to know how 10 parking spaces available for this building would be achieved. If you have other ideas aside from the, from the, you know, renting from other places, I'm all ears, but that's what I would like to see.
Grace.
And then, if it's possible, I would be interested in some information about the vacancy in the parking lots compared to cost. I don't know if or how there's a good way for you to try and determine that, but I think that that is important about, did the petitioner create the situation by their high cost for parking spaces? Meaning, are there some buildings that have parking included in rent that are full or are still at half capacity? I think that would be helpful information, if possible.
I think I could do that, limited to this particular property owner's parking lots. I think doing a survey of other buildings and other owners would be outside the scope of research.
Any other questions? Sharice.
And you're going to look up the, what the required spaces were when this building was built?
Yes, yes, that was the first one.
Just wanted to-
1981. Okay. 91 or 81?
81.
Okay. Okay. Marcus, Marcus will provide information that he is legally able to provide.
Yes, and I, I believe this would likely end up in a supplemental memo, so that it's sent out, and you have it in front of you.
Okay. Is there a hand?
I, I did have a question, but I can follow up with Marcus at another time. It's a very minor thing.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to resolution number 2022-09-069R, a resolution authorizing execution of a service agreement with the lowest responsible bidder for the supply of electricity for residential and small commercial retail customers. And does this go along with the next resolution, then?
Sorry, Sagan?
Does this go along with the next resolutions?
Correct.
You want to talk, speak to both of them?
Correct.
Okay.
So, as you mentioned, I'm going to be talking about both items two and three under new business. These both refer to municipal electric aggregation. And what I'd like to do is share a little bit about why this has come straight to city council without, first, going to the customary stop at committee of the whole. Second, talk about municipal electric aggregation in general. And then, third, present a couple of suggested text amendments. So, first, why we're here with this item without it going to committee of the whole. Typically, when an item requires a significant amount of explanation, we like to bring it to committee of the whole and have that discussion, and then less discussion and approval at city council. The documents before you actually prepared several weeks ago, anticipating that I would be several months ahead of time, specifically ahead of time when our energy broker calls me and says, hey, everything's changed, and, you know, we now need to go to solicit proposals in the market for an electric supply agreement in the next 12 days. The problem is that I got that call last week, and there are some market reasons and some regulatory reasons as to why that happened. But it turns out, I was not two months ahead of time, but two weeks behind time. So, that's why this is here before you at city council instead of committee of the whole for this presentation. Second, some members of council probably weren't on council the last time we discussed municipal electric aggregation in this venue. And so, I'd like to take a little bit of time to talk generally what it is and how we do it here at the city. So, about a decade ago, the state of Illinois took an electric, a, a, a single regulated electricity system, and split it into two separate pieces. One piece is a fully regulated, investor-owned monopoly electric utility called Ameren Illinois. They continue to own all the power lines, the electric meters, and they do the billing. That's the transmission and distribution side of an electric system. That continues to be a fully regulated, investor-owned utility. But they split off of that, the electric supply, so the, the power plants and the vendors who sell electricity, that was split off from the equipment that delivers electricity. That was split off and deregulated. And so, now we have competition in the electric supply side of the electric electricity system. That resulted in dramatically lower prices. And along with that change in the state of Illinois, the state created an option for municipalities to establish municipal electric aggregation programs. What those programs do is they take that new reality of a deregulated competitive electric supply market, and they allow cities or municipalities to bundle all their residential and small commercial electric accounts into a single large bidding group or purchasing group, so that they can get bulk pricing, better pricing, better terms, better control over electric supply. So, we do that here in Urbana, and we do that with a consultant. The consultant provides all those market services, understanding and monitoring the electricity markets, the energy markets. They also provide the bid day services, so they're bringing together all these vendors. And then, they also provide the opt-out services. So, pursuant to state statute, when we take all of our residential and small commercial accounts, bundle them together into one purchasing group, then select an electricity supply offer for municipal electric aggregation, we then automatically enroll all of those accounts in that program, but we send them an opt-out letter before they're actually, before they're starting to take that power, and they have an opportunity to opt out of that program. If they would prefer, as compared to the supply price the city gets, if they would prefer to be on the regulated Ameren default electricity supply, they can do that, they can opt out. If they would prefer to get their own retail electric supply agreement, they can opt out. Most people don't, because with the, the bulk purchase power and professional, you know, market services, we get good prices, especially over the long term. And so, that's another service that our, our consultant provides. They also provide brokerage services for gas and electric for city facilities, that's a much smaller piece of the services that they provide. So, to prepare for, so, right now, we're in, we're in the middle of a, a multi-year, not in the middle, we're near the end of a multi-year municipal electric aggregation contract that almost all of our residential and small commercial accounts are in. Right now, that electric supply price is about four and a half cents. Right now, anyone in Ameren service territory who is not in a municipal electric aggregation contract or some other retail electric supply contract is paying 10 cents a kilowatt hour. And that's going to go to 12 cents a kilowatt hour in the next non-summer period of Ameren, their default price. So, our participants in our municipal electric aggregation program are experiencing enormous, enormous price savings. Most terms, most years, most quarters of the, you know, the decade history of our municipal electric aggregation program, we've had savings for our residents. There were a couple of years, about six years ago, starting about, no, about three years ago, where our price was a little bit higher than the default Ameren price for some period of time. The overall savings, though, for the history of our program is, is positive for our ratepayers. If we, so, to prepare for, you know, the, this, the end of our current term and beginning of hopefully a new term of municipal electric aggregation, we need to do a few things. One, we need to authorize or approve a professional services agreement with our broker, or with our consultant. So, we don't, we renew that every time that we're going to go out to bid again. Two, we need to authorize city staff, someone for the city, to execute a supply agreement with the selected supplier, the selected municipal electric aggregation supplier. Now, we authorize someone to execute that agreement before we have our bid day, before we solicit proposals. And the reason is this, in the past, that we would get a couple of days to receive, accept, and literally sign a municipal electric aggregation supply agreement. These days, we are going to get a couple of hours. The market's just different. There's, there's a whole bunch of volatility in the market, regulations are changing, you know, our mix of generation in the state is changing, so there's a whole bunch of things changing, and that's what suppliers require now, because, you know, as soon as the, the market opens the next day, prices are different. And they don't want to be holding on to this offer for days, or apparently now even hours, when the market is continuing on to change prices. There was one day in, I think it was June this calendar year, where in one day, electricity prices changed three cents a kilowatt hour, just in a day. And, and, you know, we're talking about splitting tens of pennies, hundreds of pennies on this. So, when it changes three pennies in one day, that's just unheard of. So, that's why we, you know, pre-approve or pre-authorize someone from the city, typically the mayor in the past, to execute that, that supply agreement.
Scott, did you put the mic closer to you so I can-
Sorry. If we, if, if for one reason or another, so, we're going to have a bid event probably in the next two weeks. That's why there's this sense of urgency on bringing this to you right at city council, rather than going to the normal committee of the whole and then city council. It's possible that we will reject all bids. We just have to see what we're going to be able to get from the suppliers. It's also possible that, so, we know that today- It's also possible that, so we know that today, there was a procurement event buying a large block of electricity to provide power for that Ameren default price that I mentioned before. That's the price we're comparing to with our aggregation program. It's possible that when, when we see the results of that purchase today, that may push up or push down Ameren's default price. We don't know that yet. We're going to, our broker, our vendor's going to be, consultant's going to be evaluating all that over the next couple of weeks, as well as preparing a bid day, a solicitation. So if we decide to reject all bids, or for some other reason, don't have a municipal electric aggregation supply agreement, by the December meter read, we'll have no choice but to send all of our residents and small commercial accounts back to the Ameren default price, at which point they can take that price or go get their own individual retail electric supply agreement. So those, those are the choices before us. Before I finish my monologue, I do want to mention, in the time between, you know, preparing these documents, putting them in council packet, and today, I did have opportunity to speak to my municipal electric aggregation counterparts with Champaign County and Villages Savoy. And they offered me some friendly suggestions for some text amendments to our authorization, our resolution to authorize. And so I'm going to share those around to you, and we'll talk about those too. So there are essentially three amendments listed in the document going around now. The first is to add a second signer, potential signer, or authorized signer to the electric supply agreement. And the reason I kind of suggested before is we've gone from days to sign this contract after we get the price to hours. And it may be that the mayor is busy with something else, and it might be convenient to also allow the city administrator to execute that contract instead. So that's the first proposed amendment. The second one removes the low bid language. And you may think, well, why would we, why would we ever not want the low bid? And the reason is we may be in a scenario where the low bid, the lower price offered by the vendors could be for a two-year term, and a slightly higher, you know, a hundredth of a penny, slightly higher bid could be offered for a one-year term. While the market is up, we may prefer to pay a little bit more. It may be more advantageous to our ratepayers to pay a little bit more for a shorter-term contract whilst the market is up and not get locked into a higher price for two years. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but it may be good to have that flexibility. And then the third edit changes some language. Instead of comparing the offers we get for electricity pricing to the at-that-moment-published Ameren price to compare, their default regulated price, instead of comparing to that at that moment, we would compare the term, you know, the expected cost for the term of the, of the offer versus the expected price of the, in term of the Ameren default price. The reason is this. In the, so it's like the good old days, and then there's how municipal electric aggregation is now. In the good old days, Ameren would, once a year, publish an electric, a default regulated electricity price for the, for 12 months. And you could bank on that. That was rock solid. It didn't change. Now, then a few years later, they changed that to, once a year published, but there was a summer and a non-summer electric price. Now, they're buying power multiple times of the year, and they're changing the default regulated price multiple times of the year because of inflation and other market and regulatory reasons. They have to keep buying more and more power, and they're buying it more expensively. And so they have to adjust their price to, to pay for that. So the purpose of this, this change is to, is to have our comparison be to the expected cost for the term rather than whatever the price is that Ameren has published at this moment. I mentioned that right now, the published Ameren price is 10 cents a kilowatt, but the consultant's already said that they've already published an increase up to 12 cents when we go from the summer to the non-summer rate. So we know that the price is going to go up, and we wouldn't want to compare to the wrong price. So those are three proposed amendments to what was already in your packet. Those are all, that's all language that Champaign County, as well as Villages Savoy are using in their authorization. And I did notice while I was waiting to come up and talk that I did not strike the, with the lowest responsible bidder language from the title of, of the resolution. So if that is agreeable to you, we would want to strike it from the title as well. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Technical questions. Mary Alice.
Thank you for your very good overview. I mean, I've heard this, some of this before, but it was, it was, there were some things that I picked up, so thank you. I think that your suggestions make a lot of sense. And in fact, it kind of answered one of my questions, which is, you know, what, under what circumstances would you reject all offers? If you could just lay those out for us.
Sure. So if I could maybe concoct an extreme scenario. If we got a one-year offer that was, you know, that was 14 cents a kilowatt hour, and we know Ameren's going from 10 to 12, doesn't make a lot of sense. Actually, a more extreme would be a three-year, a three-year offer at 14 cents. You know, we'd be locking in 2 cents above what we, what we know. So that's, that's, we're going to be looking at the terms and trying to match them with pricing and trying to drive that as close to, well, obviously, the desire is to go below the Ameren price. Didn't even mention-
That's really the benchmark, is Ameren.
Yes. And actually, there's some, there's a couple of details there that's worth mentioning. So I mentioned, right now, we're at four and a half cents approximately with our current agreement. Well, that's actually inclusive of the price offer from, from the vendor, the supplier, a city fee, the consultant's fee, and the cost for renewable energy credits. So, you know, those are all stacked in what the ratepayer actually ends up paying. And so that, that does give us some flexibility. You know, we, we're charging, you know, a fraction of a penny that generates something like $45,000 a year in revenue to the cities. It's just a city fee. You know, we can modulate that up or down depending on what offers we get, supply offers we get. We buy renewable energy credits. You know, we don't know exactly what that price will be. That's also a market. It's another service that our consultant provides. I wouldn't recommend, you know, cutting that or removing that. That is the single largest chunk that we take out of our community greenhouse gas inventory. So the single largest thing we do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, greenhouse gas pollution from Urbana is buying those renewable energy credits equal to all of the electricity that is used in our municipal electric aggregation program. But those are, those are, you know, stacking several different things that end up with that price.
All right. Thank you.
Grace.
Thanks for the presentation. So with Good Energy, is there any flat-out fee? Or it's just the consulting fee that they take out of the rate? Like that .075 cents per kilowatt hour? Is that their only payment?
Exactly. That, that, that fee built into the electric rate is, is the only fee they charge.
Okay. And you're saying that in the current one, the city was charging .1 cent, I guess, per kilowatt hour, about 80 grand a year in revenue from that? Is that right?
It's actually half that now, I think. .0005. If it says .001, then that's outdated, actually.
Is it still about 80,000 a year, or then it's 40?
No, it's, it's half that because we, so in our, in a previous agreement, we cut that in half so that we could create a little bit of daylight between, you know, the final amount that residents would be paying and the Ameren default rate.
And that's something that would be decided once the supplier is selected?
Right.
And is, does that come back to us? Is that decided internally? Is that decided?
We haven't brought it back to City Council. No, we haven't brought it back to City Council. I'm trying to think, just past practice. No, I think we just authorized the mayor to execute that agreement. And that's been our past practice.
And then do we expect it would likely stay the same, then?
I think that .0005 is kind of our starting point. You know, I don't, I can't imagine we're going to raise the city fee because I don't think we'll have the space, you know. We're, we're probably, if we are able to get an agreeable price offer, it's probably going to be the highest price we've ever paid in municipal electric aggregation. So I can't imagine we'll have any space to raise it. They would only be lowering it, would be the only consideration.
Okay. And are those funds flagged for anything in particular? Do they just go in the general fund?
It goes in the general fund. I, I did look this morning at the annual budget, and it's not directly called out. I presume we also collect taxes or fees on electricity through Ameren and gas through Ameren. So just utility fees that are authorized by the state for cities to collect. I presume those three different ones just kind of end up in the same revenue line because I did not see it specifically called out in the annual budget.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the opt-out program, I'm wondering what about opting in? Like if someone previously selected a different provider, are they also going to be automatically enrolled in the aggregate with this new bid?
So imagine that, that, you know, yesterday, someone opted out of our existing municipal electric aggregation, and they signed a, you know, a 12-month contract with another retail electric supplier. They would not be opted in because they have a contract. So the system, you know, the state system that manages all of that behind the scenes will not, you know, rip that person out of that, that private contract they have and stick them in municipal electric aggregation.
And how would people get back in if they wanted to get in the aggregate?
So same scenario. Imagine, you know, 12 months later, imagine we have a two-year contract starting this December, and 12 months later, that person's 12-months contract expires. Then they have options. They can go to the Ameren default price. They can contact the supplier and get enrolled. You can enroll at any time. If you were out for some reason, you can enroll, enroll at any time in our municipal electric aggregation program, and you can opt out at any time.
And is that through Ameren website?
No, it's through the supplier. So we have a webpage on the city website where we have all that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Is there a motion? Before you do, there's one more area in the resolution that we need to strike, the language related to lowest responsible bidder. So that's in the fourth whereas paragraph.
All right. So let's see here. There are two resolutions here. And I'm just trying to figure out which one has, is the first one resolution have the suggested changes? Or is it the second one? I think it's the first one.
First one, number two, item two and K.
All right. So I will move Resolution Number 2022-09-069R, Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Service Agreement with, with the responsible bidder for the supply of electrical for residential and small commercial retail customers with the amended language, removing lowest from out the, throughout the entire resolution, adding the city administrator as a potential signer, and adding in the last phrase for over the term of the agreement. I think those are the main suggestions. So I move approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Any further discussion? Grace.
Thank you. Just a thought about, I would just ask if you consider the possibility of maybe opt-in, especially when this consultant company is doing a big opt-out campaign? Because there are people out there like myself who maybe bought it from a renewable energy company outside of this six years ago, and I just haven't figured out how to get back on the aggregate. Or there might have been people who signed up for the Ameren default when it was cheaper at that time years ago, and they might still be interested in the aggregate. And it seems like also helps us the more we have people involved. So I would just encourage thinking about in that campaign, maybe reaching out to the people who aren't in it and having an opt-in option or information for them.
Absolutely. It's a great suggestion. We'll do a lot of communications around it.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colafetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under New Business is Resolution 2022-09-070R, Resolution Approving a Professional Energy Consulting Services Agreement with Good Energy LP. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Grace. Seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colafetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Scott. Last business item is appointments, and we have two tonight. The first is an appointment to the Community Development Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2023. And I'm bringing to you the name of Deshaun Williams. Deshaun is an 11-year resident of Champaign County, works as a Champaign County Deputy Treasurer. In his role as Deputy Treasurer, Deshaun's primary duties and responsibilities include overseeing the daily operations of the Treasury Department and directing all activities of the Collectors Division in the Treasury Office. Deshaun is currently serving as a member of the Board of Directors for the CU Schools Foundation, is on the Advisory Board for the Fisher National Bank, and is a member of the Board of Directors for the Anti-Violence Collective. Additionally, Deshaun Williams owns Black Vest Money, a financial literacy company that partners with the multiple organizations and schools to provide core financial literacy teachings to youth and adults. In his application, Mr. Williams said, quote, "As I raised my family in the city of Urbana, it's important that we not only live here, but that we are part of the decisions that will directly affect our livelihood. I feel as those, there is so much opportunity to continue to build on the amazing foundation of our city. I want to be a small piece to a bigger puzzle that creates an amazing and vibrant city. I feel that it is opportunities such as this that allows all voices to be heard in the growth and development of our community," end quote. And then the second appointment is to the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees for a term ending June 30th, 2024. And for that, I bring you the name of Daniel Urban. Daniel Urban is a nine-year resident of Urbana as an Outreach Activities Coordinator at the Carl R. Weiss Institute for Genomic Biology. He develops educational content at the appropriate levels for various audiences while creating new outreach events and activities to bring science education to the community, including underserved populations. In his application, he stated, quote, "I, along with my spouse and our two teenage sons, have always been dedicated patrons of our local libraries. Since moving to Urbana in 2011, we've utilized the services at Urbana Free Library extensively for books, music, videos, board games, archives, chess club, teen lab, and countless special programs. It's this dedication and appreciation for our local library that motivated me to apply for a position on the board when I found out there were current openings. I am eager for the opportunity to give back to an institution that has long provided resources for my family and those of many others." So I appreciate a motion for these two appointments. James?
Yes, I'll move approval of Deshaun Williams for a position on the Community Development Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2023. And likewise, I move approval of Dan Urban for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Colafetti?
Yes.
That motion passes. Our last item on the agenda, we'll be going into closed session to discuss property acquisition pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two, Prence five. I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed session.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Shar- Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor, please. Do we need a roll call? Yes? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Colafetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
And I'm told we'll need to go up the elevator to access, we can get into the second floor? Oh, you've got, okay.
Mayor Marlin?
We had some codes changed today. Yes, and this is the last item, so when we come back, we'll immediately adjourn. Thank you. I entertain a motion to come back into open session.
I move to return to open session.
I second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Okay, so we're calling the roll for you guys to come back on. All right, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Do I say here or yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm here.
Here.
Sharice is here. Yes.
This is a vote?
Yes, here. Yes, yes.
It's a vote to come into open session. Yes. Are you listening?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor, are you back? I'm back. All right, here we go. With no further business, we will be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.